Stream. Okay, so as we're now live on YouTube.
Okay, so I'll call this meeting to order. And the first order of business is the adoption of the agenda. So I make a motion to adopt the agenda as is. Is everyone in favor of that? Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Approval of the minutes. Did you guys have a chance to look over the minutes? I didn't see anything. That was incorrect.
Looked good to me.
All right.
There was one noted by Ms. Kraus. I misspelled her name in one of the areas, and so I did make that correction. She brought to my attention earlier.
Okay, great. Okay, so I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve the minutes as they have been changed. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great. Any public comments, Stephanie?
We did not receive any public comment for this meeting tonight.
Okay, so let's go ahead and go into executive session. And I'll make a motion to go into executive session.
Need a second?
Oh, second.
Sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
Great.
Aye.
Okay, so. Okay, here we go. We're all going to go into one breakout room. Wyatt, I need you to take over so that I can go to the breakout room also.
All right, just switch the host.
Okay. And if you will put us in the breakout rooms.
Motion to approve the dates that we discussed. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great.
Ms. John Goldman, do we need to also note that we changed the time? Not just the, we changed the time?
Yes, to five o'clock.
Right.
Until further discussion, but yes, I was off right now. That's great. And Stephanie, while you're multitasking, any, any reply?
No, I, nothing. Mr. Kaplan is in the waiting room for the next case.
Okay. Carolyn, is there anything that we should know as far as district report? We could go ahead and do that now?
Only in response probably to last evening's board meeting. If you didn't have an opportunity to watch it, it's worth trying to see the overall update we, from DHEC as well as MUSC. So we had an extensive presentation kind of going through where we've been in terms of our COVID infections at the school site level and across the community. I think the good news is that while we have had around 350 positive test cases, only two have been confirmed through contact tracing is happening within the school day for either adults or, or children, and that's two out of the entire system. Now, where we have more challenges is in the athletics programs after school, where it's not necessarily clear whether it's our students, but just the fact that we're moving indoors at this time of year when the virus levels are going up. We've had students from other teams test positive, which because it's hard to contact trace with athletics, we end up having to quarantine a whole team. So Trevor, Mr. Stroudman on this call now and Ms. Huggins and Dr. Williams are meeting with some of the high school principals and athletic directors because while we're not going to change anything about opening of school after the break, there is a possibility that we may end up suspending some of athletics for a period of time, given the concern about higher than the rest of the district average around infection. So that's something that Mr. Stroudman and others are talking about. But I think the board was pleased to hear that we've had such a positive experience so far and, and we have to make sure that we continue to be diligent. And we obviously asked the community to continue the hard work that they're doing to minimize infections by wearing masks, staying six feet apart, making sure not to touch their face. Like the more that we can all do that, the more likely we are to remain in school for the rest of the year, and that is our aim. At the board meeting, we also announced, and I think this has gone, been communicated, that we're going to do an early dismissal day on Friday. It's a modest recognition to the hard work of the, the many on, on the ground folks, teachers, principals, staff members in schools who've worked very hard just to give them a little bit of an earlier day. We do know it's an inconvenience to families, but particularly appreciate that people have been very positive in an effort to understand the gesture. So that, it should be a two hour dismissal on Friday. Those were the, the big headlines, I think, from the board meeting. And we also gave an update in the school choice process just to remind people of the timeline and that parents can see videos of, of schools rather than go to a school fair, which would have been the typical way to do it in the past, given their COVID reality. We wanted to make sure that we did that. And a modest update around the partial and constituent magnet, which I know this constituent board is very invested in. So that slide was shared with the full board last evening. I mean, the headline on that is that most students in constituent magnet schools are coming from the constituent district. We have, we had a reduction between last year and this year of school, students who are out of the constituent zone attending a constituent magnet, if that makes sense. So I, I think the sport was concerned about that, particularly around Lang. And forgive me for not remembering the other school.
Uh Sullivan's Island and so I, and, and I did try to look right before, but I unfortunately must have missed that slide. Is there a timeline for any kind of action as far as I believe they were going to look at funding the programs, continuing to fund the programs?
There's been no change that I know of around funding from where it was before in terms of just a consistency across the constituent magnet programs. So we're moving towards more of a, a shared formula around allocations. But my, I'm only, I was only here for the last budget cycle. I didn't hear of any changes proposed for the coming cycle. But Trevor, do you have more information on that that I might not know about?
Girl, I don't recall hearing anything about that either. No, ma'am.
The conversation of the board meeting went more towards the question of whether we should be adding similar magnet programs in other parts of the county.
Oh, adding as opposed to subtracting?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And just out of curiosity, and, and I don't actually know if we got our 45 day, we did get 45 day numbers. Is it possible that some of the changes or lack of additional students is just a, a COVID? Yeah, repercussion?
We, we think most of the, the decline, given so much of them are in kindergarten and early childhood. That's the largest percentage of decline and that's true nationally. A lot of parents just kept their youngest kids home and rather than have them start school, that we're going to see those kids come back once we open fully in person.
But as far as affecting the magnet schools, so a constituent magnet like Sullivan's Island, was some of the attrition more in those la, lower grades that you guys found out?
The attrition was more for, they're still, they're lower enrollment than previous years because of COVID. But the attrition that I'm talking about in terms of the reduction of around 400 to around 350 is out of constituent zone. So we had more students out of D2 attending some of those schools prior to this change than we do now. So the numbers of kids though are similar beyond the COVID gap that we, we know we have across the board.
Okay, I was under the impression though for constituent magnet, for Lang, for example, that we're only pulling students, only students from D1 and D2 are allowed to go to that school. So when you were saying out of, you didn't say out of district, you said out of zone, correct?
I, I meant out of constituents. At, at some point, what I had understood was that there was a worry that when we moved from partial magnet to constituent magnet, we were actually eliminating options for, that, that too many of those schools were serving kids outside the constituent zone. So the goal was to make sure we were prioritizing local kids. And the, the result is that we are prioritizing local kids. Most of the student body in these schools are coming from the surrounding zone.
Okay.
On average. I, I'm trying to see if I can find the slide, ma'am, because that would be helpful.
And I'll add in one more question, which is probably going to be even more confusing. So the idea being that that prior, there were more students coming from other areas into the constituent magnet schools, but the change has been made this year that those kids could not apply to it anyway unless they were in D1 or D2.
That's right.
Okay.
At least for Lang, I think.
Yeah, I believe all of them are now constituent magnets.
That's right.
Right.
But there's different, some of them are not in D2. Yes.
Right, right. I just, yes, sorry. I just meaning.
You get, yeah, you get, yeah. We're, we're with each other, I think. Sorry. That made it more complicated.
And also another question, while, while we have the time. I did ask Tashiba and she said that there was no update at this point for Mr. Brewery, but capital improvements projects as far as when the money is allocated for those projects, when they will be funded. What is the rough timetable? Do you happen to know if, if that's a spring board meeting?
I think spring is probably the right timetable. The new board, the focus for December was their orientation and, and some of the wrap ups. They only had one meeting this month, both the committee of the whole and the larger meeting last night. We are going to start, prior to the next board meeting, they're meeting with a facilitator to talk about priorities. And part of the goal there is to, that board articulates what they want to accomplish in the next two years. To what extent is that aligned to the building plan? And then the building plan will start to come up so we can make those prioritization decisions. Simultaneously, Jeff has asked the learning services team to outline their long-term learning priorities. So for example, right now, we have a high need for early childhood in North, North Charleston. We, and we don't have enough classroom space to accommodate that. So if we are going to do, for example, a building with Lamb's, Hunley Park and Ladson, would we, we would want to make sure, for example, that it accommodates Head Start and early childhood CD as in the building plan, which may not have been part of the original ask as a, for instance. So that kind of thinking of where's the instructional programming and are there any changes that might drive building short or long term too?
Okay.
But then my sense is the prioritize list would be out by the end of the school year.
Okay. Obviously for D2, our big concern is CPE and a possible expansion, given that we just did a rezoning. And we don't want those numbers to creep back up again because we know that next, next school year, things are going to hopefully go back a little bit to normal.
I was out there this week, did a nice tour with Mr. Antonelli, went to a lot of classrooms for a couple of hours. And he was pointing out where the extensions would be, assuming it's approved.
Okay.
It's a, it's a real pleasant place to be.
We love it. I was going to say Dana, you can speak to that.
Yeah, they're doing a good job out there. Any other questions or things on the larger district that I can update folks on?
Not from me. Stephanie, just asking for an update if you know anything. Oops, you muted.
No news from me.
Okay. And. Go ahead.
Can we check with the AP who's in the waiting room to see if he has any update from the family?
Sure, I'll go ahead and admit him.
Because if he hasn't heard from the family, I wonder if we should just reschedule since we have to anyway. Hi, Mr. Kaplan.
Hi, Ms. Belcher. How are you?
Good, sir. We haven't heard from this family. I don't know if you have and whether they're going, they're confirmed to come at six o'clock because our first family was a no-show and we're wondering if we should continue.
Yeah, Mr. Joyner texted me. That's why I hopped on early expecting that. I did talk to the mom yesterday as well as a student, and both were aware that we were having this. And I provided Ms. Skinner with an accurate email address. So I believe Stephanie had sent them the Zoom link. So as far as I know, they do have every intention of being there or being virtually here, I should say.
So we have two options. We could sign off and come back in again just around six. Is that when it's scheduled?
It is.
Check. Or if we're not able to reach them to try to get them to come on early.
Yeah. I'm trying to think. I can see, let me see. Maybe I can look in if I, hold on. I'm thinking maybe if I look in Power School and try mom, maybe I can get her. See if we can get them on early. Let me just minimize for a moment and see if I.
Mr. Kaplan, do you want the telephone number that we have on our referral?
You'll need to put it in the chat, please, Ms. Goldman.
Actually, private chat.
Sure.
Yeah.
We're still, we're streaming live, so I want to be sensitive.
Okay.
We can hear the phone, Mr. Kaplan.
Ms. Manigo, were you part of the workshop that was presented for parents that Ms. Allen had mentioned to me?
No.
Okay. I just wondered how that went. I think it, I think it was, it might have been yesterday, so.
I heard it went very well though, but no.
Oh, good, good. It's a great idea.
It was.
Great. It looks like they are trying to get logged in.
So should we move into executive session, Ms. Skinner?
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, I think we'll need to do that.
Yes. Okay, so I'll make a motion.
Turn it over to Mr. Wyatt.
Right. I'll make a motion to go into executive session. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. White, you need me to return?
Yes. Yes, go ahead and return and it looks like the other party has got here as well.
Yes.
So I will send them in.
Okay. Mr. White, your plan is to put us back in the breakout room, is that right?
Yep, here it is. Okay, I, okay.
Now we all need to join this one again.
Alright, let me just...
Yes, I am sorry, I apologize. It would not let me put the other, other participant back in, so...
Okay, so Carrie, now go back and join the breakout room.
Okay, let me get another...
Mr. White, are you putting us back in the breakout room? Is that right?
Yeah, here we go.
I think we're going to different breakout rooms.
Yes, Ms. Boucher, do you need to be back in there as well?
Yes, I do. And Mr. Schotterman. But not Ms. Manigault or Mr. Captain.
Okay.
Okay. All right. So Carolyn, I did have, so I kind of had a cheat sheet note that I'd gotten from Sarah, and I actually had that we had to make a motion to return to open session before the motion was read. So I can double check maybe with Dr. Coakley on the...
I may have it wrong. I think part of my question was, sometimes I remember you all debating, but it might have been around the motion itself, Pamela, rather than the, you know, and folks would adjust it. Pamela, rather than the, you know, and folks would adjust it. And I don't, so I'm fine with where we are. I just don't remember you voting in front of the kid. That was what I was struggling with in my head. But I'm not the expert you are.
Okay, I mean, I'm not. I'm trying to remember. As far as I remember, we always deliberated everything in the breakout room. And then when we went back out, we had a motion in place that Stephanie read that we had all agreed upon, or someone had decided not to agree upon, but then we would vote, and it would be, the vote would be either...
It would reflect that.
Three to zero or whatever. Yes.
Got it.
Okay. But I'll double-check with Dr. Cookley, just to be on the safe side. Okay, so I think we are, okay, we have voted, we have done our reports, and I think we are good to go. So I'm going to go ahead and call this meeting, adjourn this meeting.
Pamela, don't we need to go back and vote on the hardship? I think we said we were going to wait and... Or did we do that already? The transfer?
Yes, Stephanie, I think we did this, right? Because we went back into open session.
Right, when we went to that, when we had that break, we went to...
Perfect. No worries. Thank you, Dana. Just wanted to make sure.
Confusing.
This is a very confusing meeting. Thank you all for your patience.
Okay, so I think we are good to call this meeting, and thank you all. Happy holidays.
Happy holidays.
Okay, so I need to make a motion to end this meeting. Is there a second?